Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight for being here. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on May 13th, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted to the Office of the District on May 8, 2020, at 9:00 AM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041, 551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum present in the boardroom. We have Mr. Houston, myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Avalos, I believe, on Zoom. We have Mr. Jason and Dr. Lallan, is that correct?
He's not on.
Dr. Lallan is not. We do have Jason Sarki on Zoom, so that gives us the full quorum. If I may, please have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance and the invitation.
Thank you, Father. Again, we thank you for another opportunity, Lord, to come together. Lord, that you will help us in making decisions here. That you're in charge of everything, Lord, and we continue to pray for a lot of district employees and their families, Lord, and board members, that you continue to protect us, Lord, from this COVID virus. And again, praying for each of the cities here, Laguna Vista, Port Isabel, and the Heights and Southside Drive. A prayer of taking care of all the customers. Lord, I just ask you, do you use meeting that we make the correct decisions for our customers here and the whole water district? And we thank you again for this opportunity, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Daisy, can I ask if you could turn the one light down some? Is it easier for that one or this one, however? Jason's better with that light? However, is it better?
I'm here. Hello.
Hello. For the record, we have Dr. Lallan joining us on Zoom. So we do have a presence of a full board. Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. On item three, invitations to the audience for public comments. I hope everyone's family's safe, healthy, happy. Things are going well. Hope the same for the board at this time. It gives us opportunity. Anyone like to discuss or anything, board staff? Public comments? Yes. Mr. Baldovinos?
Good evening, board members. Victor Baldovinos. I had a meeting with the, our new pre-treatment manager, and he will be actually shadowing our health inspector on the island with the different restaurants, and we're very excited that he's on board, and we look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, consider to discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from April 22nd, 2020. Session made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Avalos. Are all of us in favor? They are? No opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Moving on to item five, General Manager's report. Carlos?
I implemented a memo in there for the board to read before. But we're back to normal working hours. Everybody's working the 80 hours since May 5th. And we're continuing to do that. Hopefully, that it'll get better. It's just that, as I put in there, the employees were very happy that the board had made that decision. And the turnout was super good because nobody has been in contact with other COVID people that have part of that. So we've been safe and sound. All the employees were very happy with the results of everything that's been going on, staying away the 20 hours that they were supposed to stay at home. And it worked out very well, and they are appreciative of the board members making that decision. And on behalf of our employees and staff, we just want to thank you all again for that. And hoping that we continue to see better results than what we saw this week. So today, just today in itself, we did get three employees that are out in quarantine right now for the reason that two of them were with symptoms related. And they were supposed to get tested, one today and one tomorrow morning, getting results. And then the third one is a family member that mingled with other parties that were close to COVID virus that had it. And we're concerned about that one, too. So he'll be tested. He was tested today, so we get results on all these three by Friday and some on Monday. Hopefully, everything is okay, and we'll bring him back to work.
Remember the HIPAA laws, you know, sharing and that sort of stuff. So take close attention to that.
Yes.
Hey, Carlos?
Yes?
All of them have enough sick leave? Are they all okay in that regard?
Yes, they are. They're okay. We've been looking at that and plus vacation that they have part.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we kind of felt that it was kind of early for us to go back, but the decision was made that, as I had mentioned at the last board meeting, the county will go back to normal. That's what we're gonna do, and that's what we do. So again, hopefully that it doesn't get any worse than what we've seen today. And if anything, we'll bring back, you know, any, anything on an emergency basis that I see that we need to get the board back in, we'll let you guys know. And we'll make decisions at that time later on. But I'll be bringing another update at the next board meeting.
Just remember confidentiality and HIPAA on discussing.
Any questions on that? Moving on, I did provide my evaluation forms for the board. And they're due in May. Hopefully, by the next meeting, that you guys can fill out your response to it. I think there's 15 questions in there that you all need to come up with some numbers. And we'll have executive session at the next board meeting, so you all can discuss it and get it over with. You all have any questions? Feel free to comment on the evaluation, because it does have steps in there that you might not understand, but comment, and I will let you know what is next to do on it. So there's no questions. That's on the report right now.
We'll move on to item six, Director of Operations Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you can see on the April report for 2020, there were considerably less callouts than April of last year. It was a slow month. Since everybody was quarantined and most of the, not all the restaurants were closed. So it did give us a chance for some preventive maintenance, but by the same token, it was slow as far as callouts were concerned. There was 208 less callouts than last year. If anybody had any questions. Moving on to the next item, concerning pretreatment and lift station operations. As Mr. Baldovinos stated, we are also very happy that we have a new pretreatment manager, Frankie DuJuan, brother Francisco. He is on the audience today. And I provided some pictures of some of the lift stations where they started very enthusiastically cleaning up. And as you can see, the conditions that these lift stations get into by not doing preventive maintenance on a regular basis. Hopefully, that will be taken care of now. Some of these lift stations were pretty bad. One of the other things that unfortunately I was not able to provide to you, but one of the...
Where's Lift Station 7? Where is that?
Lift Station 7 is at, right here, about the fingers. Back there. And as a matter of fact, Lift Station number 24 is on Garcia, by Garcia, by the Halle path. Lift Station 10 is right here on Highway 100. We're going into Laguna Heights. And Lift Station 17 is by Washington Park.
So those are heavy residential neighborhoods?
Yes, sir. As you can see, there's a lot of grease that's been dumped into the shorelines.
It's kind of where, probably where we need to stress those letters that just went out that I saw about fogs, fat oils, and grease and that sort of stuff.
We did mail out...
I saw the mail outs, but I mean... Once you identify these, which stations are really bad, you can really focus on letting our public know in that area.
Yeah. Some of the, as far as some of these other letters, there's a lot of residents that didn't get them by mail. But our plan is for Mr. DuJuan to go out there and meet with the apartment manager or with management that's in Long Island, so we can distribute those letters and make sure that everybody gets a copy of that letter and understands the problems that we're having with the lift station.
You know, the letter was good, but a picture is worth thousands of letters. Yeah, if the next letter, or when you talk about the pretreatment manager, get some of these pictures out.
Okay.
Because you don't, you can see a picture real quick, and sometimes you don't want to read through a whole letter.
True. Very true.
If I may interject, with that in mind, I agree with Mr. Houston. Maybe some social media postings regarding the benefits of being responsible in this regard, picture or whatever we deem appropriate, might be a significant communication tool. Just a suggestion.
Yes, sir. We'll do that. As you can see on Lift Station 17, that's all grease. I mean, that's...
And that's Washington Park area, you said, 17?
Yes, sir.
That's a, that's a heavy residential, all residential.
Yeah, it is. Right. And then like Lift Station number 20 on Dolphin Street, Southside Drive. There's a lot of trash, whatever, a lot of trash in there.
Yeah, some of these are pretty nasty.
Yes. Yeah, it... And like I started saying, unfortunately, I wasn't able to provide a copy of a pump that they just pulled out out of Lift Station that's over here in Laguna Vista on Mesquite. It's, it's got the pump as torn. I don't know if you want to go...
Many people want to know why they smell.
That was Lift Station, the pump they just pulled out.
Hello, Francis DuJuan. We just pulled out a pump today. We've had two pumps in the wet well. One was always on, working, great, alternating, just itself by itself. There was always another one there. I never really got to, I was in charge of that department, per se. I was the wastewater manager or the system manager. But now, since I can officially ask the questions, I asked myself, my crew, and like, you know, we got to pull it out. What's wrong with the pump?
What area or pump number was this?
Number, Lift Station number one on Mesquite Street. Pretty big-sized lift station. That pump more likely were going to be confronted with an emergency repair. It's extremely bad, and I'll forward the pictures to Mr. Gomez in the morning, as I give my word I would. The balloon or the bottom base of the pump does have a hole in it. It's just, it's really bad. It's really bad. And... Yeah, what we call in the industry, a mop pit, just consists of rags, hairs, white bees, everything, just pull a desk together, combine together. I appreciate the opportunity for the pretreatment manager, lift station manager. And I just want to show Mr. Gomez, everybody, that via pictures and everything that, you know, I'm not gonna give up. I'm not gonna give up. I'm gonna keep at it. And I know they're in dire need of it, so I'm gonna be handling that. My crew and I.
Thank you.
Can't do it without the team, so we are gonna give it...
Frank, let me ask you, do you have, if you're comfortable getting in these wells and doing the work that you're doing? Do you have the proper gear to be doing all this?
Yes, we do. I know budgets are really constrained right now. We're gonna do what we can with our, with the minimal budget we have. But we do have as far as safety equipment, we do have the self-contained green naparuses, the tripods, boom truck to lift pumps up and everything. In the event that we do have to do a confined space entry, we do, we do have that with gas detectors and whatnot, and we're more likely to be looking at more towards safety from the new budget. But right now, whatever we can do, safety from above ground, we're gonna, we're gonna tackle it.
One of the thoughts that I had in conjunction with what we're doing with the letter was that we could also approach it from an educational standpoint. One, the reason I mentioned that is, for instance, my wife has these little bags that she buys now, and they're for household, for home use. You get this little bag, it's lined inside, and so what you do is you pour your grease in there that you just used, just regular cat litter. And then after a while, when it gets full, you just throw it in the trash. And that might be a good way that we can approach our customers as well, when you're out there doing the job, because that's gonna be something that we could take advantage of.
That a product you buy, like retail or something?
Yeah, I don't know where she got them online, but that's something that we could look into, and maybe Texas Cares could provide us with some information about that, if they have something available. I think Victor, very familiar with them, and he could probably help you with this. Because we're asking a lot of them. We're asking them to change the way they do their daily cooking. And if we can provide alternatives for them, if a small percentage of them take it up, it's to our advantage.
Well, actually, today, I'm glad you mentioned that. Actually, today I asked Mr. Gomez, how do I go about posting more, more things like that, and especially most especially...
Victor would be a tremendous asset for us.
Best management practices, not only for residential, but for commercial customers as well. And also on our website, I would like to put more, more items pertaining to not only the commercial customers, but also the residential, because we are confronted with...
On both sides.
On both, yes. It's both ends of the spectrum, so let's just try to tackle both at the same time, and tight manage, tight management.
I have all the faith and confidence in you that you can do the job. Trust me, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Colonel.
Moving on to the next items. I provided a picture of the Superior Water signs. They're up. Right now, we have three of them up, one on Highway 100, if you're coming in in front of the water plant. They're in Laguna Vista. Another one is on Highway 510, a couple miles right before you get into Laguna Vista. It's where our service line starts or it ends. And then the third sign is up here on Highway 48, as you're coming in from Bronson. And the fourth one is going up right as you get off the bridge, once we get the permit to get it installed here in Southside Drive. And then I also provided a copy. I went into the TCEQ website, and I provided a copy of power where they still have the recognition of Superior Water.
They have my name on there.
Yes, they do.
I said Howard, why?
You're the administrative contact.
Okay.
Would you like your cell phone added?
Orlando, did Jason have a comment?
No, that was a feedback from the mic up here.
And the last thing is the 2019 Consumer Confidence Report. This report goes out on an annual basis, and it has to be posted by June. It's already been posted. Although this year, there is an addition to that Consumer Confidence Report, and it comes back from September of 2019, where we failed to notify TCEQ the fluoride readings on our water. The, what kinds, what kinds of employees, operators, they do daily tests on the fluoride, three, sometimes four times a day, a day. But TCEQ wants an independent lab report. The water sample was sent to NELAB, although it didn't make it up there somehow. For some reason, it got lost FedEx. Never told us, or we never found out about it until it was too late. And so when we contacted TCEQ about it, we told them we had what we do, but they still wanted that independent report. So they gave us the option of report it at that point or putting it into the Consumer Confidence Report. And so we chose to report it with the Consumer Confidence Report. And that is the extent of my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
We're on to item seven, District Engineers Report. Charles?
So the first time we have is just giving an update, this project status for lift station rehabilitation. The left side of our whiteboard, where we get close to the mountains, you know, back in June 2019. And went ahead and put some photos on here, so you can kind of get a visual of where all the lift stations are at. And so, you know, we can kind of have the first visual of Port Isabel, second page is in Laguna Vista. And then the third page is the cost breakdown for the projects, you know, the way, the way we had, we had a scope of 14 lift stations. And with funding, we had to move some of those over to being funded through a future revenue note. So I don't know who else will go down the next page. So basically, this is our list of what we anticipate to be funded when we do that, go out for construction. And so basically, Lift Station 1, we are proceeding with that one for design, because, you know, obviously with the failures, that's gonna be the higher priority and then, you know, some other spots. So we'll have to find a way to get that in funding money. But at this time, we are, we are gonna be seeing 90% design this month, and it'll be ready to go out for construction, just like the Lift Stations 4, 10, Force Main on Ways Lane. And basically, the Lift Station 15, 17, and its Force Main. Lift Station 25, and its Force Main. Lift Station 30 is that Isabel's decommissioning and running deep gravity main down Ways Lane. And then Lift Station 35 is here for the Roosevelt Center on Port Road. And then this is the State Highway 100 is going to be the gravity main, so we can take those private lift stations at Stripes and HEB here in Port Isabel and give them a line to connect to, to get those pump stations decommissioned. And so, you know, I guess one, one comment I put on here, I did include the cost breakdown for the Lift Station 11 Force Main. And the main reason for that is one of the line items on here was some grit piping improvements, where I guess we had a concern with our new headworks, where the grit wash was getting flushed into our plant lift station and causing some failures there. But we were able to just slow down the flow by, you know, partially closing some valves to get the flow rate where it needed to be. So we're basically confident now that just by slowing down that flow rate has prevented this problem, where we need to modify the piping. So I mean, that's essentially taking, you know, $76,000 item out of the, out of the cost, so we can, you know, clear to their use among the lift stations. And so we did have the engineering feasibility report, oh, I guess project schedule is 53. And the planning activities in terms of the EFR approval, since those force mains were piping changes, yeah, we can scroll down. It's one more page. Yeah, so there's our, there's our schedule. So the March 15th approval for this completion of the EFR, because environmental was modified for all of our piping, our force main improvements, we're still, we sent letters out to agencies for coordination pending responses. So we're looking at the planning report being completed by the end of the month. And with that being done, they're gonna really, they would release the design funds out of escrow. But at the same time, we're looking at the 90% lift station plans coming up at the same month as well. So, you know, we'll get back on track as far as so many plans for TWDB approval in August, advertising for bids on construction in October, you know, and then have construction done by December of 2021. So that's, that's the schedule that, you know, we're still on for construction. And then the following page is just the comments we got, where they did complete the review of the engineering feasibility report. And the one thing that came back is the private lift stations for those businesses and their service lines would be ineligible for funding. So essentially, we would build a main line under this project, and it would be the private customer's responsibility to take their lift station out of service and connect their line, connect their service line to me. So that would be, you know, the component that we have to put on each customer's responsibility.
What do you think that costs would?
Oh, like as far as their service, I would think it's a relatively minor cost. I mean, for example, if we go to that exhibit, let's see, yeah, so this is the layout where the area we're talking about along Highway 100. So if you look at, you know, business number one is Stripes, two is Tortugas, three is Burger King, and then with four and HEB, all their lift stations are right along the Texas rightaway. So basically, their service lines are already sitting right next to the proposed source main. So their cost is just, you know, we'll pull it, captain there, fill in their lift station up with sand and tie their service line into the lateral. And for five, the Walgreens, and six, San Amigo Pan Shop, I mean, their lift stations are at the back of the businesses or on the side. So if they choose to just connect their force mains to the gravity main rather than be fighting against the Laguna Heights, I mean, that's, that would be the extent of their change. So it's nothing major on the private side. And then the other two on the north side would be churches, has to figure out how to get connected, and then the Treasure Island gym as well. So those, those are the, all the areas that have private lift stations.
Do we, can we compel them? Do they have to do it? Like, hey, if you don't do it, you don't get water service. Is that what happens?
Well, it would be, I mean, it's in their best interest, because say when we double the size of our Laguna Heights lift station, it's gonna change, you know, the back pressure on their pumps. And their pumps are probably gonna have a very hard time fighting. They're gonna probably end up dealing with pump failures.
I was just trying to get an idea, what would it cost? Is it $1,000 or $5,000? I know, I can't hold ourselves to an exact amount, but what a business would be looking towards or an expense to plan or think ahead?
Yeah.
Maybe it's not the time to say it in public.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe, you know, $5,000 issue for them, but I'd have to, you know, kind of maybe get some better numbers to it, but I don't, I think it would be less than that.
Don't you think that, that if this is something they're gonna have to do, we should start talking to them about it? I mean, if I'm a business owner, especially at this time, I don't want to be surprised. I want a six-month headway. I think that's, that's a proper communication on our part. We gotta give it six months.
Yeah, and I think it's fair to get their input at this stage. I mean, you know, being that we're looking at having the main line go through the November elections, and, you know, at least they can start setting up their service improvement and get everybody to schedule everything again.
Yeah, I mean, don't, don't give them, oh, yeah, next month, you're gonna need to do this. Like, it's proper and respectful to do it at this point, I think. So we'll put, leave that up to you, but can you give us a report on, you know, when you contact them and how it goes? I want to make sure it actually gets done, because that could be some bad PR with some significant businesses in our area if we don't handle it appropriately.
Yeah, yeah. I think you can follow up for the contacts and responses.
Thanks, Charles.
Yeah, we definitely need to keep that, because that is a surprise to a lot of those, to a lot of those folks. And a lot of those businesses, some of those are corporate or franchise, too, so.
Yeah.
Lead time getting ahold of them is gonna be every bit of six months. And Charles, remind us again why we're doing this change?
Well, mainly because Laguna Heights is the force main that they're all tied to, and we're gonna be doubling the... And we're going to be doubling the size of that lift station with a point committed. And when you add that change in the back pressure, your pumps are going to have to get stronger. They're going to have to basically outside all their pumps if they want to stay connected to that main because their conditions are changing. And I mean, that could run, you know, twenty, twenty-four thousand. But by giving them the ability to just have their service line happen to the, to the main gravity main, you know, that, that would reduce their cost.
Do you don't have any more maintenance in the future?
Going forward, yes.
Right. And so, and then I just attached some environmental, but I mean, it's just, that's the reason why they haven't approved playing is because environmental is still paying responses from all the agencies. That comes up, I guess, the lift station update. The, the next item on the, on the agenda is our final revenue report. You know, it's the, of course, the wastewater components. Let me scroll down to the board, please. Yeah, this is just a one-page summary. I, I did receive the, the actual report after our board packet went out, so I'm reading through it right now. But this sums up the, the work. You know, we got our remaining lift stations that are pending rehab and replacement as well. And then our Isobloco wastewater plant assessment, mainly get the headworks and improving our process for returning the sludge and with a new pump station. And then Andy Bowie is another option where we had a, you know, a grable that Huber's put on site. And they're willing to donate that equipment and, you know, and they've all, actually they, they responded where, you know, they would like to, to offer some electrical, structural, design experience to help, you know, showcase that job if we. We proceed with, with putting new headworks there at Andy Bowie. So, so that's just basically the three projects that are going to be discussed here in this revenue report with, with costs associated with, you know, planning. So I don't know if there's any questions on that or jump to the next one. If you want to scroll down to a heel point. So we have received the plat. And this might be a whole lot going on, but essentially, this is a full subdivision for, for what's, what they're planning to build.
How many lots?
Yeah, there's three hundred two lots and then that reserve for an apartment complex. So, so that's, that's basically, you know, where we're at. And, and phase one is going to be the, the first seventy-four lots, which is the entire length of Pennsylvania Avenue from our water tower property over to the school district fence. And so, I mean, they're already out there with equipment, building the subdivision, trying to get the plat through the city approved as quick as they can, you know. And, yeah, so they're, they're looking forward to, to get moving on this. I think the sales team has finished up a vast drop and then they'll be down here starting to sign. So that's, that's basically, you know, where, where the subdivision is sitting right now. And then as far as, you know, we have a portion inside the district and outside the district. So on the detail on the following two pages, we have that line there defined. So you see where highlighted in yellow, everything from Pennsylvania to the yellow line is already inside the district. So they just standard connections. We don't have to go through an annexation process. And when you get to the back half of the subdivision, that's the part that's going to have to go through annexation. And then, so that just, that gives you where the line is sitting, you know, where we have our district boundary dedicated by these events. And then, yeah, we scroll to the next page, see where it scrolls on to the eastern half of the subdivision. And so that's, that's basically where the line.
Basically, a third of it is outside of the district, kind of.
Yep, exactly. And then, yeah, that sums up the engineer's report. Any other questions?
Thank you, Charles. Let's move on to item eight. Consider an award, professional engineering design bid in construction phase services for water point number one, clarifier rehabilitation project RFQ number WW dash two zero dash zero four dash zero one.
All right, and on this one, we did receive five proposals. I went ahead and gave a couple layers so you can see a profile of, you know, each, each firm that submitted and expressed interest in the project. I think we had a good, a very positive meeting with our professional services committee. And we are recommending an award or tenor to negotiations with the Sibyl Winston Group for this project.
Questions, comments? Any questions? It is a RFQ bid. Some action item. Having no questions, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. Approval by Mr. Abos, second by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor? Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item number nine, Director of Finance Report. Thank you.
So. Now that we have a, a complete month of customer bills since the beginning of the pandemic reaching our area. I just wanted to give you an update on the district's finances. Bills for the South Padre Islands just went out on Friday, so I've been spending the last few days analyzing the, the, the numbers and the trends. And so I wanted to discuss that today. So the, the two most significant dates to remember regarding our finances are March sixteenth. The city of South Padre Island declared a local state of disaster. And on March twenty-fifth, Cameron County issued the mandatory shelter in place order. So.
Still a little premature, but you're going to see the numbers change. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Still, I mean.
Yes, yes, yes. So these are early indicators, so these, these are our revenues that we're billing our customers. No, no, like I said, the, the bills just went out on Friday so that they didn't make it into practice. Yeah, so these are the numbers that I've been working on Monday, Tuesday and, and today. So. So first, let's look at, give them, give you some context by looking at what happened in March. So comparing utility bill revenue to March of last year. We see that cycle one, which is the Laguna Vista and Laguna Heights, from February tenth to March tenth, had an increase of twenty-five percent. Then in cycle two, Cordes Abel, from February twentieth to March twentieth, had an increase of four percent. And cycle three, South Padre Island, from February thirtieth to March thirtieth, had an increase of fifteen percent. So total water and wastewater revenue for March was up fourteen percent or a hundred and four thousand. Now, comparing April, now you'll see, you'll start to see the effects of, of the shelter in place order. Cycle one, from March tenth to April tenth, had an increase of thirty-nine percent. Cycle two, from March twentieth to April twentieth, had a decrease of two percent. And cycle three, from March thirtieth to April thirtieth, had a decrease of eighteen percent. So total water and wastewater revenue for April was down five percent or thirty-nine thousand a, as compared to the prior year. So. Normally, the month of, of April brings in more revenue than, than the month of March, except in years where, where the Easter holiday falls in, in March.
What about collection?
So, yes, that's, that's, I'll, I'll talk about collections in just a second. Yes.
What would you attribute? Cycle one's billing. Thirty-nine percent increase, perhaps other tubes shows a negative.
Well, cycle one, I would attribute that to, cycle one being mostly a residential area. There's very. Yes, there's very few businesses in that area, so people sheltering in place would be home a lot during the day. Their kids are not in school, so, so the, the kids are also at home. And that's, that's what I attribute that. So that's Laguna Heights and Laguna Vista, so that definitely increases. So if you go to the next slide. Yeah, if you look at the next slide, let's look at a little bit of different customer classes. So when we look at, at last year, this would be what would be a typical year. You see the, the different trends by different types of, of customer classes. And you see normally April is, is higher than, than, than March. And you see the, the top line, which is residential customers, we normally see an increase in, in April.
Eddie, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to interrupt real quick. Is this adjusted for the increase in our rates or not?
No. The, the last year, the, no, this is not adjusted for the increase in the rates.
So isn't the, you know, any, is there anything that tells us just how much water is being used? Because I mean, it, it's hard to compare this versus last year because it's, you know, we're trying to balance out the fact that, well, there's higher rates on all this stuff too, isn't there?
So I guess you're wanting another gallon pump from the river if you got to start from there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know.
Traded rates, the numbers.
Yeah, I, I did bring the consumption numbers today, but we can, we can definitely look at those next, next meeting. I can have those.
What really would seem to me, if we want to know how much water is being used, is our consumption and/or our collectibles. If we're worried about our, how much money we have, is this, this is just our expected revenue, but it's not our actual collections, right?
Correct. This does not include corrections. This is, this is build revenue.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for interrupting. Keep going.
So you can see hotels is a little bit higher in March than, than April, but, but commercial accounts go up. And. Everything else remains relatively stable. So if you look at the next slide. You'll see the ones that were, that we can see were, were definitely affected most significantly. Hotels were, were down fifty-four percent. Restaurants down thirty-nine percent. Single meter condominiums, so that would be like the, the high-rise towers, down thirty-one percent. Commercial customers down twenty-five percent. And then residential customers had an increase of twenty-six percent. So this was just the early indications that, that I have at this point. Next meeting, I'll bring you another update. We'll have more numbers. I'll have some, some projections for you for, for the rest of the year as well. But I just wanted to give you the latest information that I have available.
At the next meeting, I need to see it right. I can't read any of them.
We understand that. He didn't have the results.
I'm just saying.
But we are going to bring it at the next meeting. I just wanted to show you the update that we have on the cycle three is the one that's down eighty percent. So that goes to show us that, that the businesses are the ones that are affected at that point because.
But it doesn't look drastic yet.
Cycle three is island, cycle one is Laguna, Houston, Laguna Heights. And again, cycle two is Cordes Abel, mostly the residential always up.
Can I interject for a moment? First, I just want to say thank you for providing this information. I can tell that you've done a lot of work on it. And, and now, the only thing that I would add. I like how you compared it to last year, but to Adam's point, somewhat an apples to oranges comparison. What, what I would like to see is when we made this year's budget, we expected X amount of revenue. So as we've already got five months of revenue, you know, we can project the, what we need to make up on the back end of this year. I'd really like to see, and we had projections for what we felt April, you know. May, June was going to bring in, be in the peak seasons, you know, where are we at in comparison to what we anticipated from a revenue standpoint? And then that, I think, will give us some information to help us adjust our budget accordingly. I don't want to get to the back end of this. You know, third quarter or even end of year where we're reeling in the slack, you know. That was kind of my intention of, of getting some financial reports. But I think we should kind of compare it to, hey, we were expecting to make this and this is kind of where we're coming in. And then look even further, these are suggestions that maybe we can, you know, table or kick down the road for, for, you know, saving some money internally. That, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
Yes, that, that's exactly what I thought on bringing it to the next meeting. I just wanted to give you a, a detail to tell you the story of what's happening right now that we can, we can see. And I'm going to work on those projections for the next meeting, the next presentation.
You did a great job, by the way, and this is great information. I like the way you laid it out. It tells a great story. Thank you for your efforts.
Also want to mention that as, as Dr. Long was mentioning. Yes, there, there does continue to be uncertainty around our accounts receivable and, and collections of those customer payments. Especially since we're not, we're not penalizing customers nor disconnecting service for non-payment. So at this time, there's no indication that that's definitely going to be a, a problem. But we are closely monitoring that. But overall, to me, these are very positive indications, definitely not as, as negative as, as, as I expected it to be. So it is not as, as severe as, as I thought, so I'm not recommending any drastic cuts at this time. We'll continue to look at it and I'll bring you more information.
We'll be looking into, bringing some options on the, of the other set of questions that Starkey had mentioned. We, of the customers, there, there are options out there, but we'll bring all the information at the next meeting. The one that we're not going to have a whole chat on, we'll be working on that soon.
Eddie, I just had a, just a general question on the negative investment earnings. What do you attribute that to?
Where are you looking at?
I'm sorry.
The next agenda item, the quarterly investment report.
So it's your financial report.
Item eleven?
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, next is the quarterly investment report. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that in just a second.
Okay.
So that's all I have for the, the financial update. I also want to mention that we, since we postponed the, the bond election. There was a requirement that we had to advertise and place notices for our customers, both on our website and, and at the entrance to our, our building. We fulfilled that requirement. So the, that's done. Just wanted to report that to you. And so that, that includes the Director of Finance Report. Move on to.
Moving on to item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval, the quarterly investment report for the quarter ended March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Yes, for March, the, the, the interest rates were continuing to drop. The, this was one of the measures that the government took to help the economy, dropping interest rates, making it easier to, to, to borrow money. And so, yeah, that return on investments is, is going, is gone down drastically and it's going to continue to go down for the next few months. So. That's, that's just the, our, our interest of revenues is going to take a hit because of that, because of the lowering of the interest rates.
Paul's question, is there something?
Paul's question, is there something that we can do to try to maybe move some monies around or something?
Yes, I do have additional, I'm gonna put an additional five hundred thousand from our, our operating account, which is earning the, the least amount of money, that's where we pay our normal bills. I'm gonna take that additional five hundred thousand out there and put that into a CD just to move it into a little bit higher interest earned investment.
Questions, comments? Is this an action?
Yes, it's.
Question for approval made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. They are, any opposed? None, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial report for March twenty twenty.
We're looking at.
Motion for approval made by Mr. Houston. Second. Thanked by Mr. Avalos for all those in favor. They are, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of backup generator for the main office. Motion to table by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. They are, none opposed, thank you. Let's move along to item thirteen, consider and review expenditures from April sixteen, twenty twenty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Acknowledged by Mr. Houston. Second. Acknowledged by Mr. Avalos of all those acknowledged. They have, thank you. Moving on to item fourteen, executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, VPCA Government Code, Section five five one zero zero one, at sequence under Section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney. Item A, update on land swap between city of Port Isabel and Laguna Mottery Water District at Little League Maintenance Yard. Item B, update on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand eight payment plan recruitment funds request. Need a motion to go into executive session at six twenty-two PM. Motion made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor? For an executive session, are we taking a little recess or do we keep on going?
Really rolling.
Let's go. Okay, let's keep on going. I asked those not involved if they could please excuse themselves from executive session. So we need a motion to come out of executive session. Yes, motion to come out of executive session made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. They are, item A, no action. Item B, no action required. Need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion made to adjourn. Six PM. Yes?
I want to make sure there's no, there's evidence I was here.
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting, meeting is adjourned at six twenty-six. Thank you everyone for your time. Wishing everyone a healthy, safety, happy recovery, success, and everything going forward.